All right, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Apologies for the tardy start today, but it is 6:02 and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Thank you. And before the clerk calls the roll, I realize I have been remiss in doing this, so I'm going to do it now before I forget, which is to read our mission statement to ground us at the beginning of each of our meetings. And our mission statement is that the Board is here to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and meaningful lives. Purposeful and fulfilling lives, meaningful also. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Barry. Dr. Cabana.
Present.
Mrs. Lilge. Mr. Lopez. Mrs. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Nebarz Martinez.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Willis.
Present.
Who are Misses present?
Wonderful. Next on the agenda would be any additions to the agenda, for which we have none, followed by public comment on agenda items. I see one more walking up. Let me just see if it's on an agenda item. Both non-agenda items? Wonderful. That brings us on to our presentation. So for this evening, we are going to hear our audit update with our partners from Manor Custerion. Is that right?
Custerison.
Custerison. Thank you, Manor Custerison. And so I'm going to invite Mr. Steve Piesco?
Piesco.
Piesco and Ms. Sherry Blankenship.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the district again this year and start with the thanks to Kim and John and their teams did a great job being ready for us. Everything went really smoothly. You'll see it's a clean audit. Sherry went through with the executive committee, finance committee in great detail a couple weeks ago, so we'll have a pretty high-level overview. And obviously, if anyone has any questions or comments, feel free to interrupt me whenever necessary. But again, Steve Piesco and Sherry Blankenship from Manor Custerison. Just a little bit about our firm. We worked with about 120 school district audits this year through August to October, about 50 full-time staff dedicated to the K-12 education group and is a big part of our practice and we take it very serious and appreciate that the district takes the whole process serious as well. A couple of high-level results. We have unmodified opinion or clean opinion, so there's three pages in the report. Those are technically the only three pages that are ours. We put our audit opinion on the district's financial statements while we helped draft the 89-page report or whatever. Technically, the opinions are the only pages that are ours, so have to report unmodified or clean opinion, so the best opinion that the district can receive. In addition to that, we also do some internal control testing and I'm glad to report that there were no issues found with internal controls. Those are also taken very seriously. There's good checks and balances and there's no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls that were identified. There's about eight pages, the first section of the audit report. The bond report is management discussion and analysis. It's about eight, eight to 10 pages written by district. Kind of, we call it the Reader's Digest version of the rest of the report, so if you want to just read eight pages, then read those. It's kind of in a more of a paragraph summary format, has comparative information with last year. Point out a couple of things in there. The blended student counts for the last five years is in there. You'll see from '22 to '23, there was approximately an 88-student decrease over the prior year. And then there's a nice section at the end on page, the last page of the management discussion analysis for factors bearing on the district future. So that's the only section in the audit report that kind of looks forward versus looking backwards. So like to highlight a couple of things there, the new Lansing Tech High School CT-Evoke Ed programs for '24, as well as the $129.7 million bond that was passed in May '22, and that will be used for Mount Hope and Willow demolition and rebuild starting in '23, '24, as well as some additional air conditioners put into several school buildings as well. On the balance sheet side, so the general fund in the first column here, you had about $96 million of assets, just over $42 million of liabilities, leaving ending general fund balance of just over $54 million. We'll touch on that a little bit more on the next page, but the other three columns are your bond, construction bond funds, your energy bonds, your 2019 bonds, and your 2022 bonds that were issued. And you'll see the 2019s were fully spent and used up in its entirety during the year, and there's about $57 million left in the 2022 capital projects fund and just over $12 million left in the energy bonds as of June 30. On the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance, again, in the first column, your general fund, your operating fund there, you see your total revenues of just over $210 million. You spent about $192 million of those, leaving you an increase in fund balance of $11,223,775, getting back to the $54 million of fund balance, which is about 28.14%, so a good, a good, healthy fund balance. I think the Ingham County average is right around 20, so a little bit, a little bit above, but not a lot. And you're not having to borrow for cash flow purposes either at that level. From the bond spending standpoint, you spent about $7.5 million of your bonded funds during the current year on capital outlay. The middle section of the report is the notes to the financial statements. This really just gives additional detail of the statements we just covered. If you looked at the statements in detail, there's a lot of definitions and additional detail to the financial statements we covered. Just want to point out a couple. One that's important in note one, we do audit all your bonded construction fund and sinking fund dollars in great detail and in their entirety almost. The, we do that in accordance with Section 1351A and 1212, which just means there's requirements for the bonded construction fund as well as the voter-approved bond language. So we test a lot of those expenditures and make sure they're in line and have to report that there were no issues identified. You do have a 4.1 mill debt millage, which is, which is actually quite low. Most districts we audit are in the more like the 7 to 12 range, so that's good to see and you still have the $130 million of bond projects going on. Capital assets, you added just over $23 million of additions in the current year, $7.6 million of depreciation on those assets, giving you a total net asset, net capital assets of 194 million, so that's all your buildings and equipment net of depreciation. That's offset by, there's four outstanding bonds at June 30 of just under 170 million. Just like point out there, your assets are 194, your debt's just under 170, so you're obviously paying down your debt faster than your assets are depreciating, which is, which is also what we would like to see, so that's good. There was one new accounting change. We talked about it a little bit last year, if you're here. Last year, we adopted a GASB 87 or Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87 on leases. This year, we adopted GASB 96 on subscription-based IT arrangements, so any long-term technology subscriptions, basically. This is the report. One, the last footnote is that you adopted that in the current year and you had just over a million dollars of subscription-based IT arrangements that were longer than a year-long. So this is just identified in the note and that you adopted it as required. Probably the most important page, the general fund budget to actual page, see in the first column, prior to the beginning of the year in June, you had original budget of just under $10 million use of fund balance planned. The final budget was amended to just over $2 million planned increase in fund balance and you came in at $11.2 million favorable. So $9 million favorable variance, that's about just under .47%, so less than, still good budgeting on 192 million. You can't go over, so you basically spent 99.5 cents out of every dollar without going over. It looks like a big number, but that's really, really good budgeting, actually, so.
Mr. Piesco?
Yeah.
On both this document and the statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance, there's revenues and expenditures, I get that, then there's the excess or deficiency, and then it says other financing sources or uses. What would those be?
The $6 million. That's the transfer to capital projects fund.
Perfect.
Yep.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Just on the, just the visual of governmental fund revenues, you'll see the '22 to '23, there's a little shift in things from year to year, more than normal probably, just because all the ESAR funds, last year you had $49.4 million of federal ESAR funds spent. This year, you had about $29.4 million of federal ESAR funds spent. So the federal shifted a little bit, and if you remember, you got a large amount of 147(c)(2) through the state that flowed through this year that you didn't have last year, so that increased the state revenue as well, so a little bit of fluctuation. You'll see the same on the, on the expenditure side of things. Things move around depending on how the ESAR funds and the teacher incentive grant was about $7 million more in the current year. So, but total support, instruction and support combined were both about 80% for both '22 and '23. The last section of the report is the single audit or federal compliance audit. You had $65,285,412 of federal funds expended during the current year. We tested and were required to test the ESAR education stabilization funds, the Title I grant, as well as your magnet school assistance grant. Those, your lower-risk audit, so we have to audit at least 20% of the total $65 million, but we also need to audit them at least every three years. So we're required to audit these three in the current year, which actually made up, since ESAR was so big, it made up 61% of your total federal expenditures that we audited. You'll see in the right column there, the no's and none reported, that's what you want to see. That means you had no issues, no compliance issues over federal awards, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And just remember, we test these for compliance, meaning did you spend the funds in compliance with the grants? But we also test them for controls, meaning how did you know you spent them in compliance? And there was no issues on either side, so good controls, again, taken seriously throughout the whole process there. There's a couple of letters also included, similar to prior year, the governance letter is kind of a letter to those charged with governance, the board. It's kind of the standard format. There were no issues or no discrepancies, no disagreements with management. Clean letter. It does highlight, again, that we adopted GASB 96 in the current year. That's in several spots throughout, just to highlight that. And then the management letter, similar comment to the prior year where, if you recall, the nonprofit food service funds only allowed 33% of expenditures fund balance, basically three-ninths, three months of the year. You are over that at about 64%. I would say 99% of our 120 schools are over that, just since, since, and have been over it since everyone had free meals a few years ago. So as you spend those down, one way is buy equipment for the cafeterias, maybe if things are budgeted for cafeteria out of the bonds, you can, you could pay for out of the food service fund if it's for the, for the food service equipment or so forth. So as you rebuild the schools, if there's cafeteria-related stuff, potentially you could come out of those funds as well. So you'll get a letter, letter just says they have to submit a spend-down plan similar to what you've had in the past, so. The last thing, just a couple of things for the future, obviously, the foundation allowance for '23, '24 went up to 96.08, a $458 increase over last year. There are two new GASBs I mentioned, like '96, coming down the line, one for 2024 and one for 2025. Neither one's going to have significant effect like these did. One's just, just more definition on our side. If there's an error, correction would change how you report that in the audit report. And then some minor changes to the compensated absence standard. You already record compensated absences, but there'll be some tweaks, so we'll have more on that in the future, but nothing that's going to significantly affect the audit report or anything the district has to really do differently, so. With that, appreciate all your, everyone's help and it was a really smooth process. We were done, you know, it was a large district, we were done several weeks ago with this report and, you know, it's when we get out here, everything's ready and waiting for us and in really good shape, so really appreciate it.
That's great. We really appreciate the edit and the audit and the report. And also want to give a big thank you to our staff that make that possible, that allow us to have everything prepared and ready to go. It doesn't go without saying that, I don't want it to go without saying that to have 60, have over 60% of our grants audited and still have a clean audit report is pretty significant, so I just want to recognize that that's a lot of work put in by our staff. I also recognize that a $54 million fund balance is a fairly healthy fund balance. I want to, while the auditors are here, ask the superintendent, you know, we have an opportunity to create a spend-down plan that still keeps us within the recommended fund balance percentage that we should have, which, Ms. Blankenship, you told us roughly, because it changes the recommendation of what the fund balance, because you have to be prepared for inflation, but roughly what should a healthy district have?
Yeah, so MSBO's recommendation is now 15 to 20% fund balance of expenditures, yep.
Thank you. We know that some of our fund balance was made possible by the fact that we have ESAR's funding and some of our other expenditures that we were able to take out of general fund spending, but that doesn't mean that in future years that some of those expenses may go back into general fund expenditures, and so we need to be prepared for that. But aside from that, I still think we might have a little bit of change left for us to create a spend-down plan, so do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. Well, first of all, I want to thank our wonderful auditors. You would still be wonderful even if you didn't give us a clean bill of health, but it really is special that a district this size is really hitting all the marks, and so I want to thank you and, as our board president said, the staff. I want to give a special shout-out to two people who are in the room, our assistant superintendent, Kim Adams, and our CFO, John Lang. Them and their team, excuse me, have done really, really terrific work, and I know you've been to a lot of school districts and, you know, the fact that we're able to basically do this so cleanly is a real testament to them. The other thing too, as the board president mentioned, a lot of this is because of the largesse of the federal government giving us a check for about $100 million. A lot of that went to things like air filters and gloves and masks, for those of you remembering the days of hardcore COVID. A lot of that was one-off spending, and what was very interesting about that federal grant, it was really one of the first times that the feds allowed us to use that money for certain other expenses, which then, of course, freed up money. So what we're seeing is a very healthy fund balance in the 28% range. I know that there's a suggestion between 15 and 20. We were talking about maybe going a little bit higher just to protect ourselves, but what we're looking at, of course, is we did sign a new significant teachers' contract, which will pay our teachers a wonderful salary, well-deserved, but we'll start to eat into this, as well as some major maintenance and deferred maintenance issues that this district has. Sadly, that $54 million might sound like a lot. Currently, we think we have about a half a billion dollars of deferred maintenance. So it can go real quick, you know, and I also appreciate you mentioning that our millage rate is actually significantly lower than almost every other district in the area and the state. I'm not saying we're about to ask you for more money, community, but I do want everybody to recognize that we have a half a billion dollars of deferred maintenance, we have a very low millage rate, and so we have to, of course, address that. Some other things, of course, that we're looking at is we do have two very large outsourced contracts. One is buses and the other one is custodial maintenance food. We do know that those are going to be more expensive. You know, inflation hits certain things easily and it hits other things very hard, and so we are trying very hard to spend every tax dollar appropriately for our children and for the district, but we definitely have a series of things that we're looking at over the next year. And what we'll, happy to talk about is, you know, there's certain spend-down plans we have to talk about, like the food service one, which we have to, but we'll also happily create a kind of spend-down plan after a year from now, when we can finalize and finish the COVID money. ESAR's is a big chunk of this, and again, and I think I've been saying this since I got here, is it was amazing, but it was one-time money. So that money that we got, we're never getting again, and so we have to be really thoughtful then though it looks like we have some cash here, we have to continue to spend it on things that won't be necessarily recurring. So again, we're going to start talking about this once we see the true impact on the teachers' contract, the true impact on ESAR's going away, and then the true impact, of course, of inflation, we'll be able to better answer these questions. But again, I want to thank our auditors and our staff that regardless of how much money we have, the fact that it's super clean and that they didn't find anything is really a testament to the way that this district is run in terms of its finances, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from any other board members? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. In the many years I am here, I never saw this visual document. They make us easier to understand, more than to go pages and pages and pages.
Yeah, it's a little easier to follow along.
And it was easier to follow all the work that you did and all the work that the Lansing School District and the Office of Finance did. I know the one with my responsibility is to approve the budget. You say that the beginning of July 1st, 2022, was 42 millions budget fund balance, but now it's 54 millions, right?
Yes.
Then we had 12, 12 millions that we added in July 1st to now.
It was, yeah, 42.8 million. It went up 11.2, so, yeah.
That these 12 millions came from the general fund or?
Yep.
Okay. How was the balance last year at this time?
How much did it go up last year?
How much was 50 million, 49 million last year at this time?
It was 42 million last year.
Okay, 42 million last year and 52, 54 million this year.
Correct, yep.
Okay, that was my, I wanted to understand that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just a reminder, we always have to do this by every November of every year. We are required to release our audit findings, so appreciate you guys coming and I'm sure we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda this evening, we have our health and wellness update, and so I'm going to invite, oh, just kidding. Maybe you guys want to stay. We can do this now, we just have to wait till action items. We do have a recommended motion to receive and approve the audit financial statement as presented. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we receive and approve the audit financial statement as presented.
It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Lilge. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes 8-0. Now it's officially released to the public. Okay, next, Dr. Sue Wheelie, we will invite you up for our health and wellness update.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me again. You always know it's the beginning of a month when I appear. Let's jump right into COVID. In October, our staff COVID numbers decreased from 44 cases to 37, fairly well-distributed across the district. Our student cases also decreased from 128 in September down to 87 in October. As we completed the first two full months of school, our COVID cases were as expected, a bit of a jump as students returned in September, followed by decreasing numbers for both students and staff last month. We had only one school outbreak, which was quickly resolved, and an occasional isolated sports team connection. Outside of the COVID world, other health issues drew our attention too. As you may know, the state of Michigan requires that we achieve a 90% immunization compliance rate by November 1st each year, followed then by a 95% compliance rate on February 1st. The school nurses worked diligently with families to obtain the required immunizations, and this week, we were solidly above the 90% requirement for all our families. The Office of School Culture partnered with the Ingham County Health Department to offer a clinic at the Halleck Center on October 12th. The event was very successful, with 55 families attending and receiving more than 177 immunizations that day. The immunization clinic will be repeated on January 16th to provide our families with convenient, easy access to immunization services. The clinic will offer all childhood immunizations, the flu vaccine, and also COVID vaccines. We're also happy to let you know that we have completed Narcan training for our nurses, public safety officers, and secretaries across the district. You may know already that Narcan is an opioid antagonist, and instead of counterbalancing symptoms like an EpiPen will, the Narcan actually blocks the brain's uptake of opioids and replacing them with the Narcan. This does not treat overdoses of non-opioid medications, and it does not have an effect on someone who has not taken opioids. What it does do is save many lives in the event of intentional or accidental overdose of an opioid. An opioid might be a drug like morphine, fentanyl, codeine, that we may see from time to time. We have begun the distribution of Narcan to these trained staff members. Nurses and public safety officers will actually carry Narcan with them, and it will also be stored in school offices with the EpiPen and other emergency medications. The medical emergency response team members in each building will also participate in the training and will be available in schools and workplaces in the event that Narcan is Our student development program continues to grow. In October, we took the program on the road, so to speak, with our programming being offered at Patengill and Gardner due to some minor repair at the field house. We enjoyed the opportunity to work with students at their home schools and introduce them to our program and trainers. These are some happy faces at Gardner playing soccer. Some of the children came to us and said, finally, our sport, so they were happy to have soccer in their home field. In September, we saw more than 800 students at the field house. Our October attendance was 672, although keep in mind that we were on the road for almost two weeks during the month of October. This graph here is just a little breakdown of what sessions were most, really, the attendance for all of them across the board. Some previews of other upcoming health attractions are, in November, we will welcome four AmeriCorps workers to the Office of School Culture. These, as we sometimes know them as domestic Peace Corps members, will work with us on projects in data collection, community health, the FORT program, the BIPOC Care Closet, and school-based community garden projects. You will learn much more about them and their work next month. All K-8 schools, everyone, has joined into the Mileage Club and will all participate in the eight-week walking program this spring through the MSU and Fitness Finders partnership. We are thankful for the terrific response from each school and look forward to the program coming in the spring. We are also developing a centralized training program for the medical emergency response teams at each school or workplace and look forward to implementing that in the coming weeks as well. As we near the Thanksgiving holiday, we're reminded that there's always, always something to be thankful for, including a school community that's invested in the health and well-being of our students, families, and staff as one of our highest of our students, families, and staff as one of our highest priorities. I appreciate the opportunity to shine a little light on our ongoing and new health programs and initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Ms. Williams?
Madam President, Sue, I have a couple of questions. How often are we seeing the outbreak in the schools that we need to use the Narcan? And then the communication for the student development program on the road wasn't quite clear because some of the high schoolers who had signed up for tutoring didn't know where to go.
First question about the Narcan. Of course, the need for the Narcan tends to be in the high schools, the older students. We have experienced students with potential drug overdose in the school. We currently would call 911 and administer emergency aid that way. We don't see this as an overwhelming problem in any of our schools, but it's a safe, effective medication to have, that even in the event that one student, staff member, visitor might need it, that we would be trained and ready to have that. But I assure you, this is not any kind of overwhelming issue in any of the schools.
So we wouldn't, we haven't had any isolated incidents that we've had to use that or have something similar to that available?
We have not.
Okay.
We are being proactive.
Okay.
And then the second question about the advertising for the the program moving. We did do a district email, a district robo-call. We posted signs. We posted signs at the field house, but I know we always seem to miss someone in a school or an isolated case. So, you know, I'm sorry if that was the case, that someone didn't know where to find us, but we're back at the field house now. So we are happy to have people join us back at the field house.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. See you one more time this year, Dr. Wheeler.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our report from superintendent. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Shuldiner.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Again, I want to thank Sue for always elucidating the information about our health and wellness. Do certainly want to reiterate what Dr. Wheeler said. The use of Narcan, of course, is hopefully incredibly limited. We have not had the use yet, but one of the things that I want to really give praise to our community and our school district for is that many of our public safety officers are in the community and they are at events and, you know, there are football games with hopefully 1,000 spectators, there are basketball games. We're always here, and the ability to have a life-saving medicine at the ready is really wonderful, and I want to thank Sue and everybody who went through the training because we always want to have people with training, but it's just one of those realities that there's an incredibly safe and effective way to counteract opioid overdose, and we're just thrilled that we were able to do that. That being said, I'll start my, I mean quasi-formal superintendent's remarks. As always, again, to remind that I do this to remind ourselves that we are not finished with our transportation issues. Currently, we have 2,655 gas cards, 870 CATA, and 3,360 on Dean, but still the 357 requests with the 85 waitlist. So again, those are families that can get a gas card, can get CATA cards, but these are families that for a series of reasons were not able to put on the yellow bus. We, again, apologize for that and make mention of this every time. We have a board meeting to remind ourselves that we continue need to work on, but again, to know that any of those families do have access to gas and CATA cards. But we have seen a significant drop in requests and waitlists over the last two years, and we do, again, have these weekly meetings with Dean to try to do the best we can for that. This week was Halloween, as I think you all know. I think you also know that I spend a lot of time in schools every day, and on Halloween, I was able to go to some of our elementary schools and see our children dressed up as an assortment of characters, many of which I could not recognize. But it was incredibly cute. The kids were definitely sugared up, but it was really wonderful. But what I want to make mention about is one of the best things that I saw at the schools was there were a lot of parents that day. There were a lot of parents in the rooms, there were a lot of parents in costume, there were a lot of parents with a lot of cookies, and I'm sure I gained at least two pounds that day. Somebody offered me really good, like pumpkin bread, and it was clearly homemade. And what, of course, it highlighted for me and what I said to the principals was, look at these amazing parents that are in the schools on a day like Halloween when we kind of open up for fun and interesting and good stuff. Imagine how more powerful this could be if we opened up every day. And I'll probably write about this in the superintendent's newsletter again, so sorry to, if you read that and listen to me, but it just highlights, again, the incredible love that the community has for the school district and the times where the district itself will create barriers for entry, right? If you remember, I see our friends from from Skilled Trades, if you remember when I got here, our CTE program had about 60 kids in it, and I kept asking why, like, I want to be a firefighter, like, that's a lot more fun than being a superintendent. And, you know, and what we realized, of course, was that there were barriers to entry that were put up for probably well-meaning reasons 10, 20, 30 years ago, but really had had not helped students. And I think we do the same thing with schools. Of course, we have to recognize that COVID destroyed that relationship, right? We didn't have a physical place to go to from March 2020 to September 2021. That's a lot of months, and you break those relationships. But we, as a district, have to do a better job opening up our schools to our families because, you know what, just an extra pair of hands, an extra pair of of eyes, somebody that cares about children, that can be a volunteer, that's how you can move a district forward. And what I saw on Halloween was this, like, wonderful day of just parents being invited and being part of it and dressing up, but, you know, to remind everybody listening that that should be every day, just like count should be every day, where every kid should go to every school all the time, every period. We need to think about how we can incorporate the family and the community more within our schools. And so, you know, I leave you with that thought is, what what is it that we can do as a school district? What can we do as a community? What can we do as school leaders that say to a family, look, you've got a job, you've got things to do, we get you, but on that off chance that you've got a Tuesday off or a Wednesday afternoon off, you know, and you want to come and help out, let us make it easy for you. So it's something to really think about, and certainly if you have ideas, you know, I'll always answer your email. But it really struck me how wonderful Halloween was and how sadly it was kind of an anathema to the normal day. And certainly, you know, teacher's got to teach, principal's got to principal, maybe that's a verb, who knows? But the idea that there's so much more that communities can do with kids, tutor, mentor, support, even just to hand out cupcakes. So that being said, I want to thank all of the families that showed up for the Halloween parades and the distribution of sugar in many forms, but just to know that we see you and we are thankful for you and that we've got to do a better job in bringing you into schools, not just on a day like Halloween. So with that, I think we do have a did you know, right? Yes, Ryan? Awesome. So we're going to turn it over to our comms team to play a video that some of you might have already seen, but we have not shared it as a did you know, so.
Yeah, thanks. This one is going to be looking at that previously mentioned student development program. You might see him a familiar face or two in there, and how it, the program helps students in the areas of academics, athletics, and wellness.
The Lansing Student Development Program is something that we wanted to offer to kids and students in the community, somewhere where they can come that's safe to work on their skills and their abilities, as well as kids that aren't necessarily athletes, that they can come work on physical health as well as some mental health.
The Student Development Center is a place where kids can work out so they can get better at whatever sport they're going to do, or they can just have dinner, or it's a place for them to go when they don't have anywhere else to go after school.
It's the whole spectrum can be served there. I mean, kids with IEPs and special needs can be there as well as, you know, the athlete who's hoping to get a college scholarship, and this is a community where everyone comes together in search of building a healthy village and making healthy choices for the rest of our lives. So I just can't stress enough that it's it's not just about athletes. It's about the fact that we all can make healthy choices and we all can be there to support each other, no matter, no matter what.
The tutoring program is important because a lot of students need extra help that they can use to get at school. So if they come here, they can do that. They can finish their homework up, they can get extra help, the help that they need from professionals.
Our program is open to anybody within the Lansing School District, grades six through 12.
So basketball is my favorite because I get to work on like all these skills such as like dribbling, shooting, passing, defense, and you get to like verse other people and like use your skills. And on Fridays, you get to play scrimmages with everyone.
I like the weight room second because you get these personal trainers that you can use. They give you these lessons, like what you can try to do.
Well, in the summer, we offered pretty much everything from soccer to basketball to weight training and conditioning, speed and agility, now as well as volleyball.
As a board member, we got to try and not be emotional. We got to try and have our best rational, critical thinking brains operating as we're considering these things. We can't worry, you know, we can't just have a program because we love that building and the memories that go along with it. That's a nice thing, but it's got to really be about what's best for children, what's best for students, what's best for their outcomes. Is this going to help them learn?
Really appreciate the Student Development Center because, you know, it's helped me get a lot better at what I want to do in life. So I'm thanking for that first and just thanking for caring about our community.
It's so easy to enroll. It literally takes my mom like a minute and 30 seconds to do it, and she's not even good with technology. You literally just click like three buttons and like it's really easy to make friends.
Thank you for sharing that. It is really easy to make friends. That is certainly something that we should think about. I also want to point out, of course, and thank you for that, it's really wonderful, is that, you know, we're now in November, you know, the holiday season is rapidly, rapidly approaching, but this is also the time where we really need to make sure that our students are doing their work. Please check that they are doing their assignments, that they're coming to school. Certainly, if families are in need, please let us know. It snowed on, you know, Halloween, which, I mean, is crazy, but, you know, I was out there giving candy to children at a at a trunk or treat, which, again, is something very new to me. In Brooklyn, most of us did not have cars, but, you know, recognizing, of course, that we do have family members and students that are always in need, and to remind everybody that we do have services, we do have coats, we do have materials for families. Please, 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 we are here to help you. Never feel ashamed to ask for help, never feel like we're, you know, that you need to hide this. We appreciate that life is difficult. We appreciate that life is hard and that when it gets cold and when it gets hard to do things, the school district really is here for you. One of the fascinating things that's changed in American society, really over about 60 years, is that was never the school district's job, right? That was never the expectation that a school district would have a food pantry or a washing machine or give out clothes, but we recognize that our job is to help our community, and we have a lot of those things. We do have the FORT program, where, again, you can certainly reach out to them if you're in need, but I do want to just remind everybody that as the holiday season begins, we are here to support you, and even if it is a way to get you in connection to services, we can do that, too, but if you don't tell us, we won't know. And I really can't stress this enough, that this district, more than really any district I've seen in a long time, has taken upon itself to create ways to help folks, not just academically, and we are here for you. That snow really reminded me that the cold weather is coming and that the need is there. And so please, you know, if anybody needs anything, you know, certainly feel free to email me, look up at our FORT program, reach out to our Office of School Culture, because we do have services for for families in need and also employees in need. I don't want anybody to think that this is only for the students of our community, but it's also for our employees as well. So not to end on a relatively somber note, but I do want to make sure that we are thoughtful about that to our community. And with that, I turn it over to President Willis.
Thank you. I appreciate that reminder. Speaking of, are we doing No Shave November for coats this year? Does anybody know?
The LSEA is absolutely doing it. We might or might not see me shaved. We will see.
We'll see. I'll probably make it. All right, not to put you on the spot, but since you want to help, we'll just say. Okay, next, we are going to move on to our routine reports. So this evening, that includes our personnel report. I will turn it over to Vice President Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Included in your packet this evening is our personnel report for approval. I'd like to highlight a few things. We had 15 resignations and we had two retirements. Congratulations to those retirees. I can't wait for the day that I can retire, but congratulations and thank you for serving in the district. I also want to highlight, we have seven, well, there were seven individuals that worked here less than one year, and we had one lunch aide that actually worked here for 13 years. So thank you for serving our students in the, in the, at their school, in their lunchroom. Three of those eight retirees are part of the Black Indigenous people, person of color. I want to highlight that as well. For our new hires, non-teachers, we have 25. Nine are new, nine of those positions are new, and six are replacements. I want to go back to the the resignations and retirements. All of those positions are going to be replaced. I want to let you all know that, the community to know that. I want to move down to the new hires, teachers. We have a total of eight, and seven of those individuals are part of are Black, Indigenous, or a person of color. Madam President and the board, we don't have any requests for leave of absent at this time and no tenure to report, so that concludes my personnel report at this moment.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members this evening?
Madam President?
Ms. Williams?
There is a position, and let me go back to it.
Just grab your mic for us real quick.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Thanks.
There's a position, internal investigator. Can someone explain what that is?
Oh, under the new hires. New hires, non-teachers, about a little after halfway down. Please.
Absolutely. I will first turn it over to our COO, Christina Tokar, and then certainly I can follow up with that.
Sure, I was actually going to hand it over to our executive director of School Culture because that's her department, so I'll hand it over to Cordelia Black. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. The internal investigator position has been in place since 2019. This is a position that is housed out of the Department of Public Safety in which they investigate incidents, allegations reported to our Human Resources Department, including staff members, possibly students and other, some are much more serious than others, but it's really, they're really investigations that that are assigned to the Department of Public Safety through our HR department, and that would be in most cases. I have, I'm not as direct in line with who is doing that out of HR at this time, so I'm going to turn this back over to Christina.
Yep, just to, can you hear me okay? Okay, so just to recap a little bit more, this investigative position does involve a lot more student interaction, things that might be escalated and need to be looked into. Again, some of them might flag and might be of great concern, and so we get involved from this level. Again, it's through an investigation process, anything that's brought to our attention, we absolutely need to look into. And then there are some incidents, too, where we need to look at different staff investigations as well. So this person assists with Human Resources and along with the schools with different investigations.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a sad truth about some of these things, but, you know, the most important- the most important thing is that if a child, if an adult, if anybody says there's an issue, you've got to be able to investigate it immediately. This role, as Christina said, is typically more about students. So if it's been reported that a student's been hurt or abused or any of that stuff, we're able to deal with that as quickly as possible. I know it happened well before I was here, but, you know, there have been some cases of pretty bad stuff. And so we want to make sure, and again, this is a position that's been around for a long time, is that you really want to make sure that you can address a concern of child safety as quickly as possible. And so we had a retirement, I don't know, a month ago, and so this is to replace the gentleman that retired.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I heard that that is a replacement, but here is new. When is new, how, when is replacement?
Sure, I can speak on that again as well. So if there's a timeframe, if there's a gap in the timeframe between when somebody resigns or retires, if there's a significant gap in time, then it's listed as a new person instead of a replacement. So there was some time, we had quite a bit of a time in between when our former employee retired out of that position and when we new hired this current position.
That is a little bit confusing for me.
So let me try to explain. So if we had a job and the person retired, that job, of course, we need to replace. But if it takes a month or two months or three months to fill that place, that's enough time where it's considered a new position. It's true that we could write it as replacement. We could very easily do that. But I think because there was a couple of months between when the person retired and when they hired the replacement, it was considered new. But I appreciate you bringing it up because it is a little confusing of actually it's really a replacement, but because the timeline, I assume, was a little bit longer, that that's why it came up that way.
I will recommend, I cannot recommend anything, but I will say there is, when is somebody that was there and we hire somebody, that is a replacement. If when is not a new job, because right here, I don't know how many jobs are new or how many are replacement because of the timing that we put in that, in that situation. There is okay, I think you, I think I explained.
No, no, it's a really good point. And I think that, you know, the HR department has certain rules about, you know, a replacement would equal within a month rather than within three months. But, I mean, if it's helpful to the Board, we can certainly extend that time period. So that's a very easy fix. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Christina, and just a reminder that the receipt and approval of the consent, I'm sorry, the personnel report is on our consent agenda, which takes us on to Item B, which is the approval of our consent agenda. This evening, our consent agenda includes the approval of the October 19th regular meeting minutes and the October 26 information study session minutes, as well as receipt and approval of the personnel report that was just presented. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes eight zero. That brings us on to our action items for this evening, which includes our new business, which is the annual resolution to levy property taxes for summer 2024. Instead of doing my usual Shirley impression of did you know, I'm actually, Shirley impression, I'm actually going to share a did you know because this is the first time that I noticed that, that I initially thought that it was a typo that it said summer of 2024, because I thought, well, isn't this us saying we need to actually get our check for the summer taxes that we just collected? But fun fact, this really is for 2024. We have to distribute this resolution to all of our entities that collect taxes for us, which includes our areas in Ingham, Eaton, and Clinton Counties by January 1, so that it stays on their books, so that they levy the taxes. So first, we have to tell them to levy the taxes, and then we have to tell them to give us our money. Very interesting. Fun fact, this evening, this is our resolution to tell them that this is telling keep our taxes levied for next year. So that summarizes it? Perfect. Any, may I have a motion? Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I move that a motion to approve annual resolution to levy property taxes summer 2024.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Ms. Moore. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you for the fun fact.
Now it's just power. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Barry? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Littleje?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Nibares Martinez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Mrs. Willis?
All right, wonderful. Motion passes eight zero. Next, we are on to a set of bid recommendations that we have for projects at Atwood. Unfortunately, the Board members were unable to attend the Facilities Committee meeting this week, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Tokar to give our update on the projects that have led to these bid recommendations this evening.
Thank you so much. So what you're going to see is a packet of bid recommendations in front of you. We are going to be completing a couple of renovations to Atwood School, starting at the very end of the school year. One of those is creating a new bus loop in front of the school to be able to take the buses off of the road. So we'll be doing that in the front of the school. And then at the back of Atwood, we're going to be adding a new full-size middle school gym slash cafeteria. So as you know, we created a K8 at Atwood, and our school is nice and full over there now, and we need a little bit more space for our kiddos. So we're going to be completing those things, as well as putting in a new playground and a few other things. So these are bids for some of that work to be done. If you'd like, I can go through each one of them. The very first one on top is going to be for the work category for site work. The person who we are recommending for that is Levitt and Stark Excavating. They were the lowest most qualified bid. The second one is for electrical work, and that is with Summit Contractors. Our third one, we had five, we were super impressed with our HVAC and plumbing. We had five bidders for both. For the HVAC portion, it is for WM Floyd, again, our lowest most qualified bidder. And for the plumbing, we are going with Gale Plumbing and Hydronics. Painting is for TL Hart. Floor coverings, our Superior Floor Coverings LLC. Our glazing, on the expansion, we are going to be doing quite a bit of window work on the new cafeteria slash gym, so that's where a lot of this comes in. The recommendation there is for Voss Glass. Of course, new roofing will need to be done with the expansion, so Roofing Innovations. The next category is for general trades, so a lot of the work that will need to be done inside as well, that is for DSI Acoustical Company. The steelwork, so putting in new footings and building the new expansion off of the back of the school, the recommendation for that is for FCC Construction. And for the mason, masonry work, Extreme Mason Contractors. And one thing I wanted to point out, point out for them, it is, the first one I've seen in a while, it is a female-owned company.
And I wanted to make sure that the full Board had an opportunity to thoroughly review these packets, since it didn't go through its usual rigorous discussion at facilities this week. I also, Christina, I have a question. I'm sorry, Ms. Tokar, for the work category 23A HVAC, there's a note here for one of the bidders that had a combined previous bid. Can you just tell us a little bit about what happened there?
Oh.
And if you can't, that's okay, I can go.
No, that's okay. We're, I'm just trying to look for where the note, you're on the 23A.
I'm on 23A HVAC.
Thank you so much. Oh, um, oh, for WM, no.
But one of the, we went with WM Floyd, but one of the bidders.
Oh, yes, Johnson and Wood LLC. So sometimes when companies are bidding multiple categories, they'll submit a bid recommendation for both categories in one packet. This happens somewhat frequently, not all of the time. And so it's parsed out. So the $281,000 was a combined bid for both work categories, 22A and 23A.
So how do we know how much they had for 23A? Like to compare, you see how we're able to compare their proposal amount?
Sure, yep. I can actually speak with our construction manager on that one. I don't have the answer for you.
Okay. Because I just see, yeah, it just says the total on both the 23A and 22A.
Yep.
Okay. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. I congratulate the committee of the group because of the 11 proposals here, all of them are the last bid money is selected, and all of them, 11 of them. Them being that maybe for less money, we get the same or better services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we certainly have the responsibility to go with not necessarily the lowest bidder, but the lowest responsible bidder. And so also always appreciate our team for their thorough evaluation of the bids that we receive. With that being said, would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education discuss all the maintenance that is presented.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Williams and supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Any questions or comments? I realize I asked my question before I called, called the question, but now I actually have a question now that I've called the question. Can you, Ms. Tokar, tell us when we plan to do this construction work at Atwood?
Sure, so literally the Monday after school gets out is when construction will start. So we are starting it as soon as possible. The bus loop will be done prior to the school year starting. The expansion off the back is quite large, so we will do all of the work that gets all of the, I will say, potential safety issues out of the way before school starts and get the main structure part of the add-on done, and then work through the interior a little bit into the school year next year. So kiddos won't be able to use it right when school opens, but they should be able to use it before the end of the school year next year. Or no, I'm sorry, not before the end of the school year, we find it at the end of the year next year.
End of the calendar year.
Yes, end of the calendar year, yes.
Great. And we'll make sure that we have plans in place to make sure that there's no disruption or, I'm sorry, interruption to children.
Correct. There will be zero interruption for students and learning.
Wonderful. Absolutely.
One thing that I really appreciate about this is, well, two things. One, we very much appreciate the community at Atwood bearing with the fact that it is a little tight there, but we think that building a really nice gymnasium and cafeteria will be a really great thing to keep Atwood kind of a successful school for generations to come. We appreciate that building already has air conditioning, a lot of the kind of more modern things that our buildings have, but it definitely needed a new cafeteria. So we're really happy about that. But I also want to point out that one might say, well, why are you doing this bid right now? It's only November. The idea, of course, is that A, inflation, and B, if we can start to get materials and get ready and getting everything, kind of all of our ducks in a row, is that it's planning so that, as Christina said, the Monday school ends, we can hit the ground running. One of the things, of course, when you do buildings like this, is you really want to use your summers as effectively as possible. And so it's certainly our hope, we can't always do it, but it is certainly our hope to get bids out as quickly as possible so that we can start to get the materials, get the stuff in place so that we can get stuff done the moment we are able to, so.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the bids as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Great, motion passes eight zero. That brings us to a report from Secretary in Announcements. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. Madam President, Lansing School District is hiring. Their coming job fair is November 9 from 11 to 2 p.m. Location, Michigan Works, 2110 South Cedar Street. And please tell your friends and families. Native American heritage month is observed in November. The Lansing School District has approximately 413 students that identify as Native American. So much we can learn and celebrate with them all the time. Winter sports season will begin November 13th for the high school students, offering five winter sports to choose from. Sexton and Everett varsity football teams advance to the MHSAA playoffs for the first time together in over a decade. Both teams will be even better next year, and I am sure the East will join them. The next information study session will be November 9th, and the regular board meeting will be November 16th. That and the report from the secretary.
You're happy to have my job.
No, it started with the same letter. It started with the same letter. That is all we have, that is all we have in common. That is all we have in common. This is the first letter.
And one thing to add is that there is no school on Tuesday. Just want to make everybody aware. It is, of course, Election Day. It is not my job to tell you who to vote for, but it is certainly my job to say you should vote. And as I think everybody knows in the community, that our schools are used as voting areas. And so we tend to try to have no school or things like that. So again, just reminder, Tuesday is Election Day, there is no school for children. So certainly, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for that friendly reminder.
Madam President.
Ms. Williams?
Before we go for next week's ISS meeting, are we going to be having it? Because we do have our MSAB conferences going on at the same time.
MSB conference. That is the same day as, what do they call it? They're like pre-conference institute, so we are still holding our meeting.
Okay.
Since that's an optional portion of the conference. It is nice that we don't have to travel, though. Next, okay, next on the agenda this evening is public comment on non-agenda items. We do have a few participants registered. I'm going to invite folks who would like to make public comment to the podium here. You have three minutes to address the Board. The Board does not typically respond to public comment. I recognize that we have a couple of students here that have registered for public comment, so I would like to invite, our first speaker is CJ Hollins.
My name is CJ Hollander. I am part of the CTE Skilled Trades Classroom. And with me, I brought a couple of students with me. I got Kevon Gabino and then someone who benefited from the Skilled Trades class, Alexis. She's with the roofers at the moment. From within the Skilled Trades, we've gotten our OSHA 30, and more of the new students are gaining their OSHA 30 cards. And by next week, we're getting certified in first aid and CPR by Captain Neal in the fire science. But from what we got, these new students, they're enjoying the class, and we now have freshmen running through, and they are enjoying, you know, what they got right now. That's what I got right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback and update. I would like to invite Kevon Witt. Thank you to CJ for helping me pronounce your name.
How's it going? My name is Kevon Witt. I am at the CTE Program of Construction Science Trades. I just think it's a very good program for kids who are looking for an opportunity to get into a trade or maybe an opportunity that doesn't involve college necessarily. I think it's a very good opening path into those type of jobs, and I just really would like to see our program become more successful and, you know, have more utilities to use and everything. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you gentlemen don't mind staying around, I will ask a member of our administrative team to connect with you and get some more information about ideas that you have. We'd like to hear more. Thank you. Next, I would like to invite Robert Gonzala to the podium.
I'm not a student.
That's okay. Okay.
Let me see. Can you hear me okay? I think I'll just do this. Thank you for giving me some time. My name's Robert Gonzalez. Does that sound all right? Okay. I'm the business manager for the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades here in the state of Michigan. I have an office just here in Lansing as well. We represent the state. But the reason I'm here, I was just listening to these young folks here that are in the CTE program, skilled trades, which we are heavily involved in, by the way. We started this a couple of years ago, and probably within the last year, I'm part of the Michigan Building Trades. But we, my organization itself, has donated a lot of time and financial resources to help the CTE program, to make it a better program and get it ready. We went as far as the building trades, like pulling together money to help pay for architectural drawings, for, to potentially build another facility. But the reason I'm up here is I have great concern. You know, as we've been doing this, which I thought was a partnership, we just had our last meeting a couple of days ago, maybe it was yesterday, I think. Time flies. But we noticed there was a painting shop inside the CTE school that was a non-union paint shop. Now, I know there's, you know, no, they were called Morellis Painting. I don't know them. My organizing department looked them up. We can't even find them registered in the state of Michigan. So I don't know if they're, you know, what the actual vetting process is when we're awarding maintenance and construction contracts. But my point is this, is as much as the CTE program provides benefit, and our ability to take that even farther is in jeopardy, if you're not aware of that, because I, I, as an organization, cannot continue, you know, we are fully invested in making the CTE program great, but the investment is not reciprocal. My point being, we just awarded construction contracts for the new Atwood project. Only two of all 11 crafts that you awarded projects to are non-union companies. And so I don't understand how, if we're going to have a partnership, because by the way, these young kids here, they can come from the CTE program straight into our apprenticeships. That, by the way, don't charge tuition. At least mine doesn't. You know, our, our programs are self-funded. Doesn't cost the taxpayer one penny. These kids would graduate from my apprenticeship and roll right into an employer, while they'd be working for one of my employers, become journey people, and be on their way with a, you know, good wage and some benefits, pension and healthcare, which I don't think anybody's against. But I don't know how we make that happen if we don't even do the work around here. How am I going to employ these young folks that we're trying to help if we don't have the work to do? So, you know, I don't know if that was known. I'm just bringing it to the board's attention because we're, you know, we're doing work all around the state. But this partnership, and it's not just my organization, it's all the Michigan Building Trades, which I believe there's 14 or 15 of them, Deshaun. You know, it doesn't feel good to see that happen because we are truly committed to help that, and we do this all around the state. But I don't know how much farther we could continue to go if we don't even have a bite at the apple, right? And I know I'm already out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
I'll entertain any questions if any of the board has questions.
We, we don't typically respond for public comment, but we'd be happy to engage with you after the meeting.
I'd like to leave you my card for everybody. Thank you.
If you don't mind giving it to our, our assistant, he'll make sure we get those for us. Thank you. Next, I would like to invite Carl Woodward, Woodard, I'm sorry.
I don't know, it's just picking my voice up. Okay, here we go. Yeah, it's Carl Woodard. I, I work with EDU staff, and so I have been assigned to the, to the construction trades class as a sub. Last year, I spent all of the year basically as a building sub at Lansing Eastern. And I am struck by the, the construction trades class. I am struck by what an opportunity this, this class and, and the ability to go into the trades is for, for these students. You know, working at Lansing Eastern, I saw just a lot of students who were going to have a very difficult time pulling themselves out of poverty, just abject poverty. And this, this program is potentially life-changing. I don't know, I can't speak to what Mr. Gonzalez said. I don't know the particulars. I mean, I hear that there's, you know, some concerns with the union and the, and the district. I don't know what the answer to that is. I hope if the district is saving money by going non-union, they're saving a ton of money because they're costing 40 students, I know, a chance at a, at a life-changing opportunity. So the other thing is, is that right now, I am the, I am the teacher in the morning, and I care about these students, and I care about them moving up, and I care about them doing well. That's about all that I have to offer these students, which isn't insignificant. But what I know about the construction trades would fit inside a thimble, okay? They need, you need to redouble your efforts to get somebody in, whether it's, you know, getting, getting somebody who maybe isn't certified as a teacher to come in for a time, but get somebody in here who knows what they're doing, okay? I love them. I love the kids. I wish the best for them, and I'll do whatever I can for them. But, you know, I, I can, I can barely handle a hammer. So I'm not doing them any huge favors other than loving on them a little bit. So anyways, that's all I have to say. Thanks. It was a privilege to talk to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know the board does not typically respond to public comment, but I will say this, the skilled trades program is a unique gem that this district has. And so we certainly appreciate the feedback and opportunity to talk about places where we can make improvements. So I do want to thank you for that public comment this evening from all of our speakers thus far. We do have one final speaker this evening, and that is Mr. Claude, Claude Hogan.
Good evening, everybody. Few things. First, I want to talk to the community real quick. You guys need to understand that when they say these people resign, some, some of those folks that resigned, they weren't, they didn't do it voluntarily. They did it because they were coerced, meaning they were pushed out, okay? Secondly, this is a question I have for the board. When the internal investigation position was originally formed, was there a process in place to support the creation of a job description that accurately describes the expectations for investigation of staff and students? What if HR complaints involve those who supervise the investigators? Do board members have access to internal investigations? Those that are in progress and those that are closed. Also, who orders these investigations? And lastly, about the school building at Atwood, are we to understand that the updates proposed for Atwood imply the current spaces being used to house the merger of two schools does not have adequate gymnasium or cafeteria space? Because I do know that at Wexford, those kids eat in the hallways. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our next spot on the agenda, which is comments from board members. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Rodriguez?
I move the poll adjourned.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Ms. Williams. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes eight zero, which means at 7:21, we are adjourned.